Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It's June 19th of 2025. Welcome, everyone, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the phone is our newest member, Demetrio Gagnon. He got a little bit delayed coming into the meeting. He's in his car now. I mentioned that we may not have a very long meeting, so I don't know if, Demetrio, are you going to try to make it or just stay in your car?
I mean, I'll drive over there and keep listening and then, yeah, if I make it there and the meeting's still going, then I'll come upstairs.
Okay, okay. So the Select Board went through your application and made your selection. So we don't know, most of us, or at least I don't know you, Demetrio, do you mind saying a few things, introducing yourself?
Sure. So, don't take any offense, and I'm not a New Jerseyan. I wasn't born there, my daughter was, so don't hold it against me, but moved up from New Jersey three years ago. I had a pretty severe car accident in New Jersey, which made me realize what's important in life, and money was not the object of importance, and it changed, and quality of life. And we're looking up and down at all the epic mountains to find an area to move to, because Rutland, we've heard obviously Rutland City. We decided to move out to Rutland Town, and I absolutely love this place. It's a gem. It's like Vermont's best-kept secret. So I figured with that, and I'll see the need in Vermont for housing, and trying to build up Rutland City and Rutland Town being very close to it, it's probably going to, you know, a lot of stuff in Rutland City has already been developed and it's kind of already there, so trying to do new developments is tough, as we can see with the potential hotel. So I figure there's an opportunity to, you know, utilize my knowledge and skills. I have an MBA in marketing and management, and I'm a licensed civil engineer. I work for V-Trans currently, and part-time at Killington and on the Select Board. So I figured, you know what, if I'm up here and I don't want to see things go willy-nilly and just all of a sudden massive sprawl and development, well, here's an opportunity to have a voice in that and try to help shape the future of Rutland Town.
Wow, okay. That was great, right off the cuff. Welcome.
Thank you.
And, yeah, maybe we'll...
If I may, I have a question. Did you say Killington Select Board?
No, no, I work part-time at Killington, the mountain.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, I don't think I could be on two select boards. That might be a conflict.
Well, that was my attempt to understand how it would work.
Yeah, no, sorry. I work part-time at Killington. That's the Killington hat, so.
All right.
Just realizing that massive mountain that's close by and not having to deal with all the headaches of it, just saw it opportunity here to kind of help develop Rutland Town. And obviously with Killington, they're going to have massive development with the with the new, you know, grand plan of the downtown, so I don't have a million dollars to live in Killington, and I don't think everybody else does, so there's obviously going to be overflow, and I think Rutland County and Mendon and these other little areas around Rutland City or around Killington are going to get a lot of the population. So there's an opportunity for smart development. And planning. I'm a big planner. I like to plan and then have continued some plans, then, so, all right.
You came to the right place. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Motion approved. Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
And I will second.
I would, I think I want to add something to new business, and that would be maybe the Moonbrook Stormwater Ordinance being used for the first time. But we can talk to Bill about that a little bit more if we could add that. So, all those in favor?
Well, hang on. We need to make an adjustment to the to the motion, so I will retract my motion to approve the agenda as as presented to include Barbara's addition to the Moonbrook Stormwater Application Ordinance, excuse me, under new business.
Okay, is that good with the?
I'm good with that with the second also.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I think that's unanimous.
It is here in the room, Barbara.
I'm sorry?
It is in the room.
Okay, in the room. Is there any public in the room?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, okay. So down to new business. Bill, you sent an email today to Andres Toriso, who, you know, heads up our MS4 and our Moonbrook work and keeps track of, you know, what we need for that permit and the ordinance. And so it seemed like there might be some development possible coming in the Moonbrook.
Yep, so there was someone who is working on a project in town and had asked about what parts of the ordinance apply. So I sent her to the, our stormwater map, which works very, very well. And, great, thank you. And I was reading the ordinance, and by the way, I think this section, this section, this section, and this section are all updated in state law. I'm like, oh, okay. I sent it to Andres, and he was basically, oh, yeah, yeah, it is. We should update that, so we're working on it for you. So, yeah, so we, I sent it back to him. That is really loud. I sent it back to him, and he said he was going to work on updating it, so apparently there's some sections that are, there's there's some triggers that are a much lower threshold than we have right now. So he's working on updating that. So we'll go back to the board when he's sent it back to me.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's anything like the subdivision ordinance. It looks like it's just one section that will have to be retooled.
Barbara, is there something going across your microphone? Because there's a noise coming.
By Demetrio.
Okay.
He's muted.
That's better.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, it looks like there's just one section that Andres will have to change. That will go through the Select Board. But if this project comes to fruition, its first stop will be the Stormwater Commission, and you remember who the Stormwater Commission is.
Yeah, it's in the watershed, but it's not in the stream buffer. It's way outside. It's just on the very edge of the watershed.
Okay. So, yeah, the Stormwater Commission is us, and so we would we'll be taking a look at that potential project through the lens of this ordinance that we haven't used yet.
Barbara, I don't know if you noticed, but I put my finger on my nose.
All right, hopefully that'll be short-lived.
I know. Had to try something.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, we just have some very preliminary information on that, that business. So moving down to old business. So we've got the subdivision ordinance that is in, you could say it's in the Select Board's court right now. We asked that they listen to Kevin Brown, have him come to them and say many of the same things he said to us. So that's going to happen on July 1st at 5:30. And it'll most likely end up in executive session because it's Town Council speaking to us. So we'll have that half hour. And I did want, since especially you, Dana, and Demetrio, if you've come here, there was a couple, well, last meeting, I guess, that we had, we went through what would be our talking points and then decided that we were at a crossroads and we needed the Select Board to kind of give us some guidance. But some of those talking points were, you know, about the risk of having a subdivision ordinance that wouldn't pass legal muster. And you know, it would take us from a one-acre town to a 10-acre town for the purposes of Act 250, so development, you know, it wouldn't, Act 250 wouldn't kick in unless the development was 10 acres in size and more than 15 housing units, I believe is the number. There are some other points that were brought up that are in the minutes for May 29th. And you could, you probably have already seen those. So that's where we are right now. And I don't know if there'll be any time after Kevin Brown does his presentation on the first for us to say anything to the Select Board. But hopefully we can get in a few comments. And it would be great to maybe talk a little bit about how much time has been spent in trying to rework this. And that we, you know, we would like to have a working ordinance. You know, we prefer not to keep using one that is not
Is illegal.
Is illegal. And it may not protect people going forward.
I think the term illegal is a little bit too strong. I think it's outdated. It doesn't meet certain requirements that didn't exist. This is, parts of it are 50 years old, parts of it are 20 years 20 years old, and the enabling statute has been changed significantly. So we don't comply, but we're not illegal.
Well, there are references that are not legal. By my definition, linguistically, if it is not legal, it is illegal. And therefore, the references that we have in our document are not in accordance with what is legal. Excuse me for differing, Norman, but...
Yeah, and I thought Kevin also said that, you know, there were some things that have been inserted over the years that cross over into zoning language. And the primary reason why this wouldn't, you know, hold up in court is because we don't, we can't support that zoning language because we don't have zoning.
Well, it can't be part, as I remember his comments, those provisions are no longer allowed in a subdivision ordinance. They are part of the zoning legislation. But it's all, I mean, it's all academic in a sense. It flunks. It doesn't pass the spell test anymore, whatever you want to call it, and whatever you want to characterize.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so Bill, you made the invitation to Kevin for on behalf of the Select Board. Did you give him any instructions on, you know, he only has a half hour, so what is he, what should he be concentrating on?
He understands why he's coming, so it's going to be, I mean, yes, I think, you know, you guys can be there and, you know, but I think the 30 minutes is going to go really quick, so you know, the board's going to have questions, I'm assuming. I don't know how much we can get into really into discussion in that 30 minutes if we're not directly receiving advice from Kevin, so we do need to be careful with the the executive session rule. So I think a lot of it's going to be just listening to him, and then the discussion can be had in the open meeting.
Yeah, and I'll stay for the open meeting. Anyone else is welcome to as well.
Barbara, you did get my message, did you not, that I was going, that I'm going to be away, so I will not be able to make that?
Oh, okay.
Didn't I write back to you as soon as you sent that out that I would be away?
I saw that. I don't remember whether...
Or did I send it to everybody? Okay, I may have. And on another note, this has got nothing to do with our agenda, but did you get my message? I tried to text you to let you know that I would not be at the last meeting. Did you see that?
Yeah, I did. I saw it after the fact, so, yeah.
After the fact, okay.
That's why I didn't text you back, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Just wanted to make sure I had the right number. Apologies.
I don't say Barbara's.
Oh, nice.
Okay, yeah, welcome again. So, Demetrio, we were just talking about our subdivision ordinance, which is most of the work that we do goes through the subdivision ordinance because we don't have zoning. About the only thing that we really can act on is when someone subdivides their property. And the ordinance we have, we've been using for 50 years, and it's really outdated, and we tried to update it. We've spent close to two years now, guys.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Because we wrote the the ordinance prior to sending it to Kevin, and we must have spent nine months on that. Then Kevin got it and took at least six months to get it back to us. And then we spent from, was it October or November of last year, through March or April, I can't remember, one of the two of this year. So that's another six months, so 15, 21, yeah, it's at least 21 months plus, if my math is close.
Yeah, and, you know, because it's 50 years old, our town attorney has told us it's, you know, it's obsolete. It would not hold up in court anymore. So we're going to the Select Board and going to have the town attorney repeat what he told us to them. And see where that goes. Most likely, they will not act on anything that evening. Yeah, they usually would bring it up at another meeting, but I'll be sticking around.
Barbara, since we're on the topic of the subdivision ordinance, did we, I think I saw that in a minute, did we agree that we would want to recommend a joint, what's it called?
Joint meeting?
No. Unified, that's what it's called, not joint, but unified ordinance document, including zoning. Yes, Uniform Development Bylaws. We did recommend it.
I'm still thinking Kevin's going to bring that up again. I have brought it up with Mary, and Bill, I don't think it came up in the short conversation we had, you know, that set up this this meeting with Kevin with the Select Board. Yeah. But I think it will be coming up again, Dana, as one solution.
Yep.
Did, yeah.
Suggestion is that Bill give Demetrio a copy of Kevin's letter so he knows where we're coming from at this point, basically. And we'll be as much up to speed as we are.
Trying to quickly read some of the ordinances or the ordinance.
But don't bother to read the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, it's all scrapped. Okay. I'm just trying to see what the historical was for it, because I guess...
Most of it's not functional.
The letter would help, though.
The letter would be better, because the letter does an analysis of section by section of our current subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
It's 18 pages long, which is only four pages short of what our ordinance is. And so, yeah, it will tell you exactly why the various sections aren't, do not pass legal muster, yeah, right. And you would get a much better understanding if you did those, read those.
Or you could take the 30,000-foot level look at it, Demetrio, and and look at the town attorney's letter and just see all of, all of the places where it falls short. It'll be hard to do much more of a deeper dive than that without you having to use the subdivision ordinance and and, you know, getting around some of the legalese of the letter to the state statute ramifications.
I'm just curious how it's going to be out with Act 250, and there's only a temporary reduction. I guess, you know, Act 250 is obviously very overbearing for developers. So I know that the governor's kind of, and they've been bringing it back, you know, tailing it back a little bit. But I mean, is the ordinance still going to be in line with Act 250 after this, you know, few years of, you know, laxing the law, or?
I don't think there's an Act 250. It's there's not an it goes into a little more, the problems are a little deeper than Act 250.
Okay.
I mean, Act 250 is no better, but there are just more problems with it. Act 250 is not a big problem.
So the way we look at it, though, is that with Act 250, because we're a one-acre town, if it's beyond one acre, then Act 250 takes precedence over our
That's an impact, but that's not one of the things in the ordinance.
No, we don't have any references. Well, excuse me, I shouldn't say that, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Separating two.
Because we don't have zoning, Act 250 is even more heavy-handed, if you will.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to say. Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, and that's where I was just seeing if the new ordinance is, if that's good, you know, obviously Act 250 is going to supersede our ordinance.
It all
Just trying to see how, just trying to get a landscape of how the Act 250 affects our ordinance and just, you know, once I see the attorney's review and all that stuff.
If we had zoning, Act 250 would be relaxed. It would go from every project that's an acre and more in size to 10 acres. So it would allow more development to not have to go through that whole process.
But it would also allow us greater authority over regulating what happens in that development, which we do not currently have because our only oversight right now is related to subdividing parcels.
Yeah.
We can't put restrictions on how it is used. If we had unified development bylaws, including zoning, then we could. The current document that we're using for subdivision ordinance refers to a lot of things that would otherwise be covered under zoning, which we have no authority over.
And I'm assuming there's no plan to implement zoning?
Uh, that might be a miss under, well...
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I know that people like not having zoning, and then I guess having the zoning, though, and then how that works out with Act 250, you know, you got to weigh the pros and cons.
You got to weigh your pros and cons. The Planning Commission has debated long and hard about the virtues and follies of zoning. And at the last meeting I attended, there was almost unanimous support for the unified development bylaws as a recommendation to the Select Board because we can't do what the, what the current bylaws think we can do. So, I mean, we can't do much, and people who come before the Planning Commission ask for direction, and we can't really give them much because we don't have any authority over that decision-making. So it's
A lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts, and the three of us who have been on this project for 21 months understand how unworkable the current ordinance is and how un what, not unworkable, but unfulfilling just having a subdivision ordinance would be in terms of operating as a municipality, so.
And frankly, what you'll find is that in a number of places, Kevin points out that what we have is no longer enforceable. So if we trimmed it down, we'd be even two-thirds naked instead of half, basically, in terms of our regulatory. I don't mean to be
We're attempting to explain the letters. It's easier for you to
Yeah, I'll just
See the letter, and then we could, then some of the responses would make more sense.
Exactly. And if you have any questions, ask Bill because Bill has all the answers.
Yeah, and we're at a crossroads, Demetrio, because, you know, we don't want to spend much more time on recrafting this ordinance or putting together a zoning ordinance without the Select Board supporting that.
Right.
Okay. Anything more on that topic? Okay, we can move down to the Pocket Park, and all this is, is that we should have a meeting with the new Rec Director as soon as he comes on board, July 1st. So I was thinking of extending the invitation to him for our July 10th meeting. And maybe a backup date if he's on vacation would be July 31st. And what we will be talking about is Phase One of, you know, getting work underway there. That would be clearing brush, thinning trees, removing dead trees, removing invasive plants and replacing with native species, expanding the parking lot on Simon's Avenue, safety alert signs for flooding and combined sewer overflows, and removing, I think, any of you that went on a site visit a couple of years ago saw the pipe ends down at the shores, shore end, the beach areas. So removing or covering those, and I think there's some wiring left over from GMP activities on the property. So, yeah, so the meeting would be like, you know, let's set up a timetable. Let's figure out who's going to be doing these costs, figure out whether we need to go to the Select Board for funding for some of it. And all that fun stuff.
Did you say new Rec Director?
Full-time.
Yeah.
Mike Rowe retired from the school as a teacher. He is, his budget includes
Oh, so now he's full-time.
Year-round Rec Director.
That was Mike.
You retired from what?
The school.
Teaching.
He taught, and, okay.
He was a PE teacher.
Yeah. Will he have an office in the town building somewhere, Bill?
Nope, not here. He's got, he's got three buildings that belong to him.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, look forward to that in July.
So, quick question. Where's the Pocket, like, is there a location determined for this Pocket Park?
Yeah, it's right, right after the bridge, down here.
Yep, yep, right across from the gym or near, yeah. Right across from the gym or near, yeah.
Uh, it's very close to here. It, it's, yeah, you know where the railroad bridge.
Waterfall is where the railroad tracks across the waterfall.
Yep, yep, right across from the, like, where the colleges, right, isn't the college.
That way, um, it's easier to see if you, if you're heading west here.
Okay.
On Route four and before you get to, um, uh, East Proctor Road, Route three.
Or the fire stations, the fire.
The fire stations, just before the fire station. If you look left as you're coming down to the light, under the, uh, under the bridge, instead of going off to the right, you look to the left, you'll see the creek and that little area uh, on the west bank of the creek is the po- pocket park. That was owned by GMP and it's been, uh, given to the, uh, town and that's what we're trying to develop.
And we could refer to it as a proposed park. It's not physically done.
Yeah. The proposed pocket park, yeah.
We have funding for that or? Costs, yes, because funding's kinda tough to determine, but.
We do have a budget.
Okay.
Um, well, I'm not sure we, you can say that, but it's gonna be done in phase.
Yeah.
Well, we developed one for a grant that we didn't get.
That's right.
Um, yeah.
So we do have costs associated with certain aspects of the, um, of the park development.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and the select boards on, you know, they're fully aware that it's gonna cost some money and they're on board with doing this in phases and maybe taking municipal funds for that. And Dimitri, it's called a pocket park because it's about, uh, half of an acre in size. But it's a great location. It's right over, it's on one side of the falls there, so, uh, there'd be a great opportunity to have an overlook area. It's used mostly by, um, fishermen now. Um, but we're hoping to have some, some picnic facilities there, maybe some trails. Um, and some historical signs. It's a very historical area and going back to indigenous peoples. And, and right through the development of Rutland, it was important. So in the Revolutionary War, it's got, yeah, lots of ties. So there's a lot we can do with that half acre.
No, I was just trying to think of funding sources, 'cause I've been reaching out to like Hop and Moose and, um, All in Stone for Northwood. They have the Disc Golf Park there, so trying to revitalize tee pads. And All in Stone was willing to donate some, you know, some of their pavers. Hop and Moose was willing to donate some money. And all it took was tell them, hey, we'll put a sponsorship up, saying that, you know. So I was just thinking, there's another opportunity to maybe get some other local, like, you know, obviously Dick sells fishing gear, played against sports, went out of business. Uh, I'm trying to think of any other local fishermen or fisher, um, you know, shops that, you know, may be interested in chipping in some money to at least help contribute to it and we could put up a sign, you know, donated by. There's an opportunity. That way, if somebody comes here to fish, you're like, hey, I'm gonna go support this business that supported building this, so.
Mm-hmm.
Just some thoughts.
Yeah, that works very successfully in a lot of, of parks and recreational facilities. Yep. Okay. So yeah, let's set up a date with Mike Rowe. And, you know, I, he hasn't, he hasn't, you know, he goes to, you know, as the, the part-time rec director, he goes to the select board meetings, but he hasn't, uh, we haven't overlapped, you know, when he speaks and when I speak, so he hasn't heard a lot about um, our latest, you know, plans or phases and things like that, so uh, he does know that we went for the grant and he had some input in that, but a lot of this stuff is gonna be new to him. But we don't wanna let him off the hook just because it's new to him. This will be part of his job, his new job.
Yep.
Okay. Any announcements?
Well, Barbara, I might as well mention that in addition to not being available on the first of the select board meeting, I will miss the next planning commission meeting on the tenth.
The tenth, okay.
As will I.
Okay. Bill, anything on your end? That we should know about?
Not at the moment, no.
Yeah, the, um, the, the demolition um, of the mall is working its way through the Act two fifty process. And we, we looked at, you know, we had the attorney for the developer come. Um, let's see, what did he say? The timeframe for Act two fifty, I think he said he hoped to hear in a couple of months?
In three weeks, they, they've been looking at it in three weeks and it's, then there's gonna be the, the, the public hearing window and uh, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be August or September before they get started, so, you know.
Yeah, and there's gonna be fencing up there when they're doing the demolition work. Um, they will have, you know, there will be, they'll only open it up when they're actually in doing the demolition work of the mall. Um, but there will still be access to Spartan Arena.
Yeah.
That fence. So yeah, that's about, I think that's about it for that project and of course it, it's, it's gonna be the same players, they're gonna go through Act two fifty for the construction of the, the Super Walmart. Um, but they're, they're, they're not gonna, they can't mix these things. They're gonna get the thing leveled first and put in that, the stormwater treatment, remember that, with the, the grass area in the middle? Which will help with, you know, retain more of the stormwater. Um, and once that's all done, then they start the application for the construction with Wal- Walmart. And it does not sound like there would be any roadblocks from what I hear, that, you know, everything that has been promised is coming to fruition. Is that how you interpret it, Bill?
Yeah, like it's, it's, it's moving along like they anticipated it would, so just hope it keeps going.
Yeah.
Is it just a Super Walmart there or are there gonna be other stores?
All that's announced.
Yeah, so that's all we know. So they may, they may have some other small, you know, just trying to think of a mall for a Super Walmart. It's quite a lot of space, so.
Well, well, there, there's a three acre stormwater rule that they are gonna be tearing up parking lot and turning back to grass to, to comply with, so they're tearing down a lot of the building, not just for Walmart, but to get rid of a stormwater compliance problem.
But what else?
They're not tearing down the whole thing.
Okay.
Most of it.
I lost, I lost, oh, there you go, Sherman. I lost audio for a minute.
Are we okay?
Everything went away just for a second, so that was very strange. Okay.
The, the approach is for the owner to get the, the, the property in, in condition, so there're no there're no problems with it from an Act two fifty perspective. And then once that's done, they'll start working on, on the K, on the, oh, it got me saying Kmart.
Super Walmart.
On the Super Walmart. That way, if the Super Walmart falls through, the owner is still with a parcel of property that meets all.
Yeah, so that way, if somebody else wants.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe a Costco.
So, so, yes, so, so the, the stormwater green area will be in the middle and there's sort of like a north and a south campus that is planned that will be interconnected. There'll be roads. Um, the south will be all the Super Walmart. And then, um, the north, where they're taking most of the buildings down remains to be seen. You know, the Spartan Arena and what? We don't know yet.
So is the Super Walmart supposed to be occupying that major um, the parking lot area slash um, road around the south side of the mall? No. I wasn't here last time. I did see Bill's email about getting some back. Is that where it's supposed to be, um, set up? On the south side of the ring around the, uh, current mall?
As I understand it, the Super Walmart will take up, yep, this, what, what was all parking in the southern part of the lot?
On the southern part, yep. Okay.
But there's no, nothing official has been presented to us about where the Super Walmart will be. That's just, it looks like it's gonna be.
No, but when Barbara was saying north and south campus, then I was, uh, equating that with the only part of the south side that I could think of was that parking lot area at the far, at the extremity of the, um, at the ri- of the ring that goes around towards the back where the, there were some, uh, trailers parked.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we haven't seen the plans for the Super Walmart yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Only for the demolition.
Yeah, it's o- only concept. There's no, there's no building plans, yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to get an idea. I thought you might have seen something and I was trying to, in my mind, envision what that would look like without having seen a diagram.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, and that leaves us with the minutes for tonight. Let me, uh, try not to make noise, but let me figure out if we can do either one of these minutes. Uh, you know, if we have enough people. So the May eighth minutes.
Weekend. You, Norman, Andy and I were all there.
Yeah.
That's four.
Okay.
We got a quorum.
Yeah.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
May eighth?
Yeah.
Oh, there's two.
Doesn't have your name then.
It's too many.
No, here, I do.
You're here on May twenty ninth, but not May eighth.
There, um, at the very top, Sherman, there's a date that goes with the minutes as opposed to the, the date line.
The eighth was two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago.
Mm-hmm. I was not here two meetings.
Okay, yeah.
But this, the minutes say I was, so we should.
No, 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 that, that's something that I have to talk to Bill about. I was supposed to get to him. There are two sets dated May eighth. One is the twenty ninth. That's a typo that needs to be corrected before we publish them. But let's take, let's take the real May eighth meeting, at which I was present. That is the, uh, first one.
Yeah, Sherman, Sherman, the real date is in the upper left-hand corner.
Right, but both of them. Both of them, yeah, okay, five twenty nine.
I see, alright.
Then that, that is a typo, then the date is down below that should be, should be correct.
Yes, so I was at the five twenty nine meeting. Is that wish?
That was the last.
In the heading, yeah.
You were there. Okay, so let's, uh, do the May eighth meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep.
Yes?
Um, yes, uh, first on the adjournment. Um, it only said Andy moved. I actually moved. I have my own notes. I moved. Andy seconded that.
That's what it says.
No, it doesn't.
May eighth? Mr. Pearson moved to approve the minutes?
No.
Oh, to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Okay.
And Andy seconded that.
All right.
At least that's what I got.
Okay, is, is there a motion on the floor to change the minutes?
Well, yeah, I think we also need to change the date up at the top, the typo that, well, actually, that's on the next set. Never mind.
Yep, that's the next set.
That's the next set. I gotta keep them straight in my head.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's act on these minutes before it gets even more confusing to have three sets.
No, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct what I just said. I don't know, I, the note that I have is ambiguous. It could be about the minutes as opposed to the adjournment. So I, I'll stand corrected. If that was uh, what Bill pulled off of the, uh, video, then I won't, I won't challenge that. Because my, mine is ambiguous.
Can we just back up for a minute? So, so the, the minutes I'm looking at have two dates on them. One date at the upper left-hand corner that's all numeric, doesn't say MAY. It says five twenty nine twenty five.
No, five eight twenty five.
No, the, the minutes I'm looking at, the minutes I'm looking at, I'm describing, attempting to get some explanation. So the ones I'm looking at say five twenty nine, I assume that's the correct date. Because the date that's printed says MAY eight.
Right.
Yeah.
So which one are we looking at?
We're looking at the one, the upper left-hand corner. It will say five eight twenty twenty five.
Okay. Alright.
That's the one we're looking at right now. So.
So I always draw that. I, I can't, I can't be clear. My, my, usually I'm, I'm more specific and um, I, I wasn't in my note-taking on that, so at least I don't think I was.
Okay.
So Andy may have been the one who actually moved to adjourn, so I'll, I'll strike what I said.
Okay, so any further discussion on the May eighth minutes? All those in favor say aye.
And I'm abstaining.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. And now to the five twenty nine twenty twenty five minutes. Um, let's see, we've got one, two, only three. We can't do it.
Barbara, Sherman.
Yep. Oh, no. There're three of us.
Only three of us.
Yep.
Okay, Bill, you, you'll change the date on that before we take this again.
I have one other observation, even though we're not actually discussing the minutes formally. Uh, the meeting time was exactly the same as on the eighth? Because both say adjournment. Okay, I mean, I was just, I wasn't. Yeah, that's fine. I just, I just thought that that was extremely coincidental.
Getting worse than me.
Uh, I, I know. I, I realized that when I was sitting at home.
Just not me.
I, I almost sent Bill a, a message and I forgot, so my apologies, Bill, on both of these.
Somebody sent it to him and signed my name?
No, no, no. I wouldn't do that to you, Norman. I give you enough grief anyway.
Okay, so we'll have to wait on those.
Postponed, yeah.
So we're down to the motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.